Order. This being the first meeting of the year 2025. So as you know, or don't know, for the new board members, this is a reorganization. So we will appoint all the officers. And then I will real quickly hurry up and turn over the gavel to whomever you appoint as the next chair. But before I do that, who would like to lead the pledge?
All right, let's get it.
Somebody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty to justice for all.
We have everybody here.
Go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Jason Jenkins.
So I have a nomination of Jason Jenkins. Is there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Dana Mann to V G.
Okay. I have a nomination of Dana Mann to V G. How about any others? Seeing none. Do I ask for discussion next? No. Okay. So I would say those that are in favor of Jason Jenkins, please say aye. Okay. Those in favor of Dan a man, please say aye. Does that work for you, Madam Secretary? Okay, so welcome. Congratulations. And the rest is yours. And I did forget to turn off the mic when I started.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, um, we will have the election of the board vice chair. Nominations.
Nominate Jason Jenkins.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none. All those in favor of Jason, please say aye. Aye. And that was unanimous. Congratulations, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Um, election of board clerk is next. Nominations. Nominations Tyler.
I'd like to nominate Dana Gordon.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Billy.
Any other nominations? Okay, by show of hands. All in favor of Dana. Three. All in favor of Billy. Congratulations, Billy. Nominations are open for board treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Joe.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Joe, please say aye. Aye. Congratulations, Joe. All right, approval of the agenda. We have a motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Recognitions.
Madam Chair. Uh, last part of November, my family had a medical emergency and Jason and Billy were kind enough to take time out of their busy schedules to check in on me and my family. And I really appreciate that. So gentlemen, thank you.
Other recognitions?
Madam Chair.
Billy.
Um, so we had six beef donated to us from Whirlwind, correct? Hurricane Services, um, Circle Nine. Transported them to Buffalo and First Northern Bank. Picked them up at Buffalo and delivered them to us. And also like to thank everybody that helped, um, handing out the beef on Christmas for everybody.
Yeah, that was, that was a really great experience. I'm assuming you had a lot of calls the next day too. And did we get to almost everybody, do you think?
Yeah, we, I believe Adam brought nine packs up the next day that we were able to get distributed to the high school.
Thank you. Any more recognitions?
Madam Chair.
Jason.
Do we have an idea of how many, uh, participants we had or how many families we helped?
I believe Tyler has.
Okay. Thank you.
So these are real rough numbers, but, uh, middle school, high school, um, exceeded the hundred and thirty-three mark of students and families that participated. And the elementary was, um, over a hundred and thirty-two. Um, those are the numbers from that night. And then after that, it, it only increased. So, uh, yes, absolutely. Thank you. And, and just so you know, the rest of the story, not being a Paul Harvey, but there is another part of this story. Sorry, thank you. The beef that was unloaded at the V, um, in the cooler, that cooler quit working. Um, so, um, a big thank you to Casey Keeler, who caught it before it was too late. Um, but the same people that unloaded it, loaded it the next day and just moved it to a different spot. So we ended up looking pretty smart after all.
Wow. All right. Well, yes, I'd like to echo those thanks. That was, that was a pretty fun evening to, to do that and, and to direct traffic. Something I enjoy. And I, I, um, Tyler. No, go ahead.
Remember, we missed a month in between here. So, okay. Um, first of all, uh, Aces Empowering Teens, Haley Hemrick, uh, middle school students and high school mentors back in early December, put on a really good production of the Nutcracker Prince, because that's how long it's been since I've seen you guys. Um, but shout out to everybody involved with that. Um, I had given a report, but to let you guys know that the spelling bee is back, I can't remember if I sent you a picture or not. Um, but would recognize Nikki Bartlett and Carrie Manders for bringing that back. Uh, Sally Hoover and Aaron Pazinski for making it work. And then of course, uh, in third place from Upton was Ashton Penfield. In second place was Isabel Parsons from here in Newcastle. And the winner was a seventh grader from N M S Brendan Smith. All three of those students qualify for the state spelling bee in beautiful Rock Springs now. So shout out to those guys. Um, still going back a ways, but Mr. Whipple, Mrs. Whipple, Mrs. Hoover again, because it's that time of year. Um, and Dr. Colgrove, and of course, all the student performers, we had some really good band and choir concerts back in December. If you were able to attend that, um, they did a really nice job. So I would give them a shout out. Um, I'll talk a little more in my report, maybe if I'm still ready to talk some more, but I would really thank Nikki Bloom for what I put her through the last couple of days. We had data meetings. It went really well. Teachers want to do more for students. So that meant a lot more schedule adjustments and changes. And Nikki Bloom does all that work for us. And she did a great job. So thank you to her. And my last one, I promise, um, the newsletter journal and specifically Bob Bonner, um, has provided us with nineteen tickets uh, to the cowgirls basketball game on Saturday. Um, and so Coach Dickey and Coach Lep and seventeen girls are going to head down to Laramie and watch a cowgirls game and maybe even get a little tour, but that's all thanks to Bob and the newsletter journal. And then of course, those coaches for sponsoring this weekend.
That's awesome.
That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else have recognitions? Bryce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this one was for last board meeting too. The day after Thanksgiving, members of the wrestling team helped a veteran in our community. Um, who was actually moving from the community, but was a disabled veteran, um, pack up his house into a U-Haul and help their family move. And so I appreciate them taking their time on, you know, their Thanksgiving break to do that for that gentleman. Um, also, I just, uh, want to recognize the custodial maintenance team. The buildings are great coming back. They utilize that time efficiently and effectively to, to get our buildings up and running and going, looking good for kids to come back to school. And then want to recognize a student that we found out today was selected to the Wyoming House of Representatives page program on, um, February third through seventh. Presley Fitzwater will be down there serving as a page at our legislature. So I think that's a very cool honor for her and, uh, I think she's going to do amazing. So congratulations to Mr. Fitzwater too.
Great. Brandy.
All right, again, bear with me because we haven't seen you for a while. Um, first, I'd like to recognize Sarah Whipple and the kids for the great Christmas concerts. I don't know if you guys got to attend, but we had lots of great feedback. Um, also for Operation Santa Kids Helping Kids, this was the first year our team of teachers in fourth grade had done it solo without lots of experience and went off without a hitch, but, um, so shout out to Devon Dickey, Brittany Weigel, who is now Brittany Hines, by the way, over break. And, um, Tori Mobley, and then the students, and then we have many, many staff members, volunteers, including our lawn for Schmidt, um, and others who came to help with the fundraising, the shopping, the wrapping and the delivering, including some of our former teachers. So we really appreciated that. Uh, also like to recognize the December Good Citizens, Roberta Haynes, Diamond Perry Godoy, I always say it wrong, and Mason Washburn. And then, um, big shout out to Mr. Nelson in the coding club. I don't know if you guys have saw on our Facebook page. Um, Rainy Olson programmed a little robot on her own to do a twinkle, twinkle little star. So Mr. Nelson has really helped them embrace things when they discover, you know, when they're coding, oh, hey, I can do this. And then they go off completely and do something other than what was planned. And so it was pretty exciting to see that. But there's a couple other little things that they're working on like that. So shout out to all of them. And then I would also echo what, um, Bryce said about our custodial and maintenance crews. Our building looked great coming back and really appreciated their hard work. And then happy National School Board Appreciation Month. So that's all I have.
Thank you for listening.
Any other recognitions? I personally would like to say thank you for all of your support. Um, Taylor wanted me to thank you as well. Um, he's doing fine and, and it was a very scary time for us, but it's always helpful to know people I think can have a some pray in for us. So thank you. Visitors comments? Oh, yes ma'am. That is just fine.
Okay. And also I haven't seen you guys in a while. So we have our state convention and we had two members actually run for positions on the board. Callie Christensen ran for vice president, which is kudos to her because it's kind of, it's split the letterbox a little bit. So that was really good. And Presley Fitzwater also ran for a state position and she was ultimately elected as the Northeast Region Representative. So that was going to be one of my favorites, but I figured I'd just deal with this. Um, and then so now we actually are bringing a spring summit to the high school and we're hosting a summit, uh, to all of the, like, region councils. So that's pretty good. I think we have forty students coming already, which is really exciting. And that's going to be on the twenty-seventh of January. So at the end of this month. So that's kind of remains obvious right now. And then um, the last thing I have is we have a board draft planned for February fourth. If you guys would all like to join and donate some blood, that'd be greatly appreciated. And then, um, our next council meeting is on the twenty-first at six thirty in the library. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. Are we so good, you think? Okay. All right. Awesome. Um, action items consent agenda.
Number group.
It's been moved and sanctified to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Joe.
Just one quick question. I tried to figure out what this was. The machine sign, they see smiles signature thing? Say that again. I'm sorry.
She's not going to.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Old business. J L C F dash E Narcan, the lock zone administration policy and procedures on third and final reading.
So my recommendation to the board would be to approve that policy, uh, and procedures on third and final reading.
It's been moved and sanctified to approve a forementioned policy. Is there any discussion, especially Tyler and Susan? Do you have any questions since this is a third reading?
That's not very fair to you guys to step into the last part of it.
Madam Chair, can we just give a brief summary of what the policy is going to be?
Sure.
I can try. So, um, this is the policy that, um, would allow those that choose to, um, to carry the Narcan, um, with them on school grounds. And so the Narcan is the, I guess, the quickest way to help somebody in a fentanyl overdose kind of a situation. Um, you do have to take a ten minute kind of a training. Um, it's my understanding that even if it was a, a heart attack or maybe another health related emergency, the Narcan cannot hurt. Um, but earlier this school year, um, one of the districts to the north of us, it actually did save a, a student's life because it was a, an overdose and, and somebody that was in the area knew what they were looking at, um, knew that the student wasn't responding and was able to, to provide the Narcan until the emergency officials could get there. And thank goodness, the young man survived. And it's nothing, it's the weirdest thing. It looks like a little jet, but it, it's just a simple little nasal kind of a squirt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would add too, as in your packet, you could see that the usage report, you have to fill out a whole lot of stuff to
Another thing I would tell you, yeah. And after you fill that, it goes to Homeland Security. Homeland Security works with public health. There is no charge to the individual that, that wants to carry these. Um, in fact, I, I carry one and I carry one in my pickup and I carry one in my, my, my backpack, which is usually in my pickup as well. Just because we never know.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Jason.
Um, refresh my memory on that policy. Does that, does that have, uh, that does have the location of where they're going to be placed, correct?
Yes. Um, not only does it have the individuals, um, that can carry, but there will be the designated spots, um, and they are in that, in the policy.
Freakly doesn't play any of those sports, but I know that if she was, if she wanted to wrestle or play lacrosse or rugby or something, I would be very glad that she has it to where she could do it with women and not with the men.
Did you see it, Sonia, blowing up this fast and this big? Did you, I mean, you're
I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. Um, I know that girls have wanted to have that opportunity to do that. And so, you know, it's daunting to think about wrestling boys and it's tough when you go into a sport pretty much knowing that there's no way I'm going to win and to keep at it and keep passionate about it. And so to have the, your own division where you're wrestling against, you know, women, because like Alexis said, it's, I mean, it's just, it's biology. The boys are going to be stronger in high school than you are, no matter how good you are.
But there will be the designated spots, um, and they are in that, in the policy.
The, the only thing I would, I guess, and I, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with the policy. The only thing I would like to see is just some more locations added other than just the office. Um, you know, time is of the essence when it comes to that. Heaven forbid, we have to use that and have to run down to the office or have somebody from the office come to one side of the school or the other. So I guess my vision with, to see is, is one of those on each, each end of the hallway and plus the, plus the office. Or if, again, if a teacher on that end is, is willing to to do, or have taken the training, maybe have something in their classroom on that end of the school.
I don't disagree with you. I, I, when, when we were working with public health, the biggest issue was, is the supervision piece of those. Um, sometimes if, you know, I, I'd even thought about putting them like in the fire extinguisher areas. Right. That's probably going to be a false sense of security, knowing that somebody may not think that's a good place for it and hide it somewhere else. Um, but I can definitely, I can visit with Homeland and public health to see if they have some other ideas.
Well, and I understand it's accountability issue, Brad, but I, again, just, just, just a forethought of just more locations. And I'm not saying, you know, ten other locations, but just a couple more. Um, just a quicker access is all, is all.
And I think, I can't remember right off, but between twenty and thirty staff members, I believe, also took the training. District wide. But it is open for anyone else that would like to, to take the training.
Um, your microphone, please.
All right. Talk loud enough. They, they make locked boxes that we could put on the walls that just have a code. And you could scatter them throughout. And so you know what the code is. And if you don't know the code, I can call the office and say, hey, you know, but you can, you can get access. That's what they do in the big cities. There's boxes all over on the streets. And they call nine one one, they give them the code and you can administer to anybody right on the street. Yeah, it's, uh, the big cities have it for years now, several years. Because the drugs, it's just huge.
The one I saw in Colorado was a dispensing machine.
That would be cool. But yeah, if you're worried about it, we could put lock boxes in several locations with a, a code on it. That your
Maybe we can check how much those cost or if possibly someone's offering them for free.
Probably could.
I will do some checking with public health.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. New business financial audit.
So for the new board members, I'm going to spare you a Happy New Year's present right away. Cause usually this comes in a half hour presentation. Um, however, since it's already been accepted, this is really sort of going backwards. Um, which if you're on the board very long and you work with me, you'll understand that reverse works the same as forward. Um, and so with that, I would recommend to the board, um, the audit facts and findings, um, that are in your packet and were actually presented um, to W D E in December. And I can't remember the exact date in which they've been accepted by them as well. So this is sort of a technicality after the fact. Angie, could you comment on that, please?
Yeah. So they were due to W D E on December fifteenth or seventeenth. They were sent in and they have been, I've got the letter back saying they've been approved on the management decision letter. Um, Paul could not make it tonight. And because it's already been done, but if you have any questions and would like him to be here the next meeting, he will be. So that is up to the board.
My only comment was, um, noticing how the new law on how certain industries don't have to pay their taxes on a timely manner. And that leaves us one point two million dollars waiting for them to pay their taxes. So that legislation hasn't been great for school districts. So you have a motion?
So moved.
Yes, we discussed before. It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial audit report for the fiscal year ending June twenty-third, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carrying. Thank you, Angie. Thank you, Brad. And I, and I will say, if, uh, for our new members, if, if you have questions about that as you go through that again to see, um, I'll have, I'll be happy to help if I can, but Angie's a, a really good resource for understanding how that all works. And that's a long one. So I'm getting to our next item. Okay. Uh, yearly meeting dates and times. There it is. Just so everybody sees that and that we have two changes. And do we approve our schedule? Yeah, we do this one. Okay. So we have a motion to approve the schedule. It's removed and seconded to approve the yearly meeting dates and time schedule. Um, does anyone have any questions? Or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carrying classified recommendation.
I have a resignation.
Resignation.
That's okay. Um, I would recommend the resignation of Dave Taylor as a bus, school bus driver and permission to post that position.
Yep. It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified resignation of, uh, David Taylor as a bus driver and permission to post. Is there any discussion? How many, how short are we on bus drivers? Are we okay?
That is not the new year's spirit. I'm glad you didn't have a microphone. Um, uh, so no, we are still, I think, I believe there's two, two bus drivers that are still in, in training. Um, so we're still working through, through that and, and still trying to make sure that, you know, all the activities are, are covered as well.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carrying revisions to pause the E F A health and wellness.
And this is sort of a, a follow-up and, and for all board members, even if you weren't new, but um, remember right before Thanksgiving, we had our food service audit. And part of the food service audit was to update, um, the health and wellness policy, which just coincidentally was also a conversation that the board had had. And so I am recommending, um, this policy. The reason I'm not doing it on first, second, or third reading, um, which we can, um, but where it is driven by, by the federal laws and everything, there's really not a lot of wiggle room. I mean, we could add to it, but you can't delete from it. And so with that, I would, I would recommend, um, the revisions of that policy that is in your packet.
We have a motion. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve revisions to pause the E F A health and wellness. Is there any discussion? I just have two quick questions. Um, so it says we will do an assessment. When did we do our last assessment?
I believe, um, oh, let's see. I gotta figure out exactly what they were talking about with assessment.
Three years, it says.
There was a, there was a transition, um, with, with some federal law stuff. So, um, what I believe triggers that is after your audit, then, then they will give the, the next piece of that comes from them as well. Um, and just so the board knows, um, during the audit closure or review, um, I did mention to the auditor that there is serious conversation in the district about walking away from the federal lunch program. She did let me know at that time that to walk away from the lunch program doesn't mean you have to do it K twelve. You can do it, um, you could do it six twelve. You could do it at any kind of grade level you want. Um, I do think, um, once we finish all of the compliance issues set forward with the audit and, and we get to see that, none of the audit facts and findings had anything to do with what I would deem food quality or food quantity. For example, I had to take the, all of the juices and sugar-free products out of the vending machine and make sure that it was water and take a picture of the vending machine to get through that piece of the audit. We had to have this policy, you know, those kinds of things. So, um, my understanding is whatever that next piece of their sequence they will send and whether that's a, um, student kind of an assessment, if that's a parent student, staff student, I don't, I don't know exactly what the, the next phase of that is. But I think it does come from them and then we'll follow whatever guidelines they have for us.
Okay, because I noticed it said three years and I, I couldn't remember if it had said five before.
Well, no, my understanding is there was a hiccup in between because there was, wasn't there something that happened in the lunch program? That, that triggered some rule changes that, that weren't part of an audit, whether we missed an audit or the, we skipped, I think, an audit phase at one time there.
Do you remember?
Oh, maybe it was. It was COVID. Okay. Thank you. I forgot already.
Okay. And then, thank you. And my second question is, it says we will have a wellness advisory committee.
We will have to form one of those.
So we do have to do one of those and that does require a board member. Um, so maybe we should add that on our committee list.
We could do that here in just a
Yeah.
brief minute.
Those are my only two comments. Did anyone have, else have anything? Yes. It says, um,
I should have a board member.
Parents, students, representatives of the school food authority, teachers of P E, school health professionals, school board, school administrators, as well as general public. So it's a pretty big committee.
Madam Chair, could we just add that?
Hang on one second. It's on the very first page of E F A. Okay, first page is the new one. Jason, does that help?
No, I was just gonna ask, do we just add that to the number one under discussion items when we're doing the committee?
Yep.
Then that'll, that'll give the board some, a few, few moments to figure out who wants to do that.
And these guys just need another committee out here too, don't they? All right, um, oh, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carrying. Now, um, do you have an estimated amount of time for item G? Is this an informational thing or? The reason I ask is I'm wondering if we do these other things before, so people who need to hit the road can go since the weather's bad.
Allison, could you answer that better than I or Abby?
This is Abby. Allison's just going to join us for executive session. Can you ask the question again? I'm sorry, my microphone cracked out.
Um, you asked about executive, right? Yes, about it, an estimated amount of time.
I would expect it'd take about fifteen to, probably fifteen minutes would be my guess.
Travelers, are you okay with that? So, okay. Okay, so, um, may I have a motion to move into executive session?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to enter executive session under warming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five X I for a student issue. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carrying. All right, we'll call this meeting back to order. Um, we are up to administrators and others reports. So who would like to start? Okay, I'm calling on people. Beau?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I really don't have, uh, too much. So, um, our, our printer project that we were doing over, over break, what we did is we swapped out about, uh, fifty percent of the fleet of the printers. So we looked at usage and we took those top fifty and we moved them out. Um, we got them all in and the plan is to next year swap that other half. And once those are done, we, we're good. Um, we did update all the firmware and everything on the printer. So everything security wise is, is good and we got the new printers. Um, I would say that probably the biggest thing moving forward is, um, and I'm sure, um, you'll start seeing this a little bit, but Power School apparently had a breach. Um, we had a letter from Power School saying we were not breached. We still went ahead and called them. And we called our rep. They said that we didn't have a breach, but then we went ahead and we went through logs too. So I'm pretty sure I didn't see any, any weird IP addresses or weird polls, but, um, everybody in the state got it. It was a big conversation on our tech director thread. As a matter of fact, there's a Zoom meeting tomorrow with CARES, which is our, our overseer, um, for security. And they're just gonna kind of brief us on, on that breach and what that looked like. So if you hear that or anybody asks, we, we've combed through all our stuff and I'm, I'm almost positive we're okay, so.
All right.
But other than that, if anybody has any questions, that's all I had.
Any questions for Beau? Tyler Bartley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I basically kind of mentioned this with my recognitions, but just so you guys understand what we're doing. Um, data meetings and everything coming out of first semester and into second semester. Sonia and Aaron and Taryn and teachers and just everybody getting together. And I just, it's very impressive what our district does for students. I think you guys are all aware of that and it happens in all three buildings, but it's just, I, I'm always proud to see it. Uh, the only other thing, I think you've got an email, but it's really been a long time coming. Um, also this Saturday, January eleventh, uh, the Rapid City Rush game. Um, Mr. Whipple has taken over the seventh and eighth grade and high school choir, those students that were able to do it to sing the National Anthem. I think he sent out the link for discounted tickets. You gotta buy tickets, but it's at a discounted rate. Um, and I don't think he's told you this, but it's first responder night as well. And so they're gonna be there singing the National Anthem and then Mr. Whipple will be out as part of the starting lineups. Um, so that's kind of a cool opportunity if you're gonna go to Rapid City this weekend. Um, and I probably should have done this under recognitions, but Barb Riggs, uh, when she saw that, uh, she went ahead and bought six tickets for students or, or adults that couldn't afford them and donated those back. So just appreciate Barb. Um, but otherwise I think that's it unless you guys had questions.
Very nice. Any questions? Okay, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I don't have much. Over break, we done CLT did new, new flooring and the concessions. That's about the only big thing we did, lots of little stuff, but, um, I emailed everybody a whole packet of stuff. Don't know, it was pretty late today, two o'clock or something before I got emailed. I emailed everybody a whole packet of stuff. Don't know, it was pretty late today, two o'clock or something before I got emailed. Um, but more just maybe planning ahead, looking for some budget stuff. The state has cut some contracts that they're, we're trying to work through. The big one being the Long's contract, the H V A C contract, uh, about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year. They've paid it since two thousand thirteen. Um, we're working with Long's, trying to figure out some wording to appease the state. I don't know what we do if that doesn't work. Uh, we also took on a roof contract at fifteen thousand a year for insurance for roof reports. Rapid fire, which is also mandated, have to have the fire systems checked. Another fifteen thousand dollars a year, um, is gonna have to come out of the general fund maintenance budget. This winter, we've already lost a differential on a pickup, just driving down the highway. Literally exploded. Just got it put back in and one of the plow pickups, it's leaking again, so it's back in the shop. So right now we're down to two plow pickups and a little tractor. Um, we've lost another hub on a, another plow pickup. It's been back up, but right, time to start thinking about a pickup. So we got something a little more dependable than what we have. Also lawn mowers are getting pretty held out, got lots of hours, lots of time on them. Something else we probably need to think about, um, but lots of money. There was troubles at the boilers at the high school just before Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving. Basically, we lost a gas control valve. So it was dumping it. About ten folded the boiler. Um, so if it's, and I don't remember the exact number, it's a million B T U boiler, which that's way too small for what that is. But it was running about ten million BTUs. Turned the stack black. Luckily, the boiler took it. Didn't do much damage to the boiler itself. But we're looking, the boilers are aged out. Can't find parts, the parts you can find, you're six months out, eight months out, and prices are crazy high. Um, working with S F D, trying to figure out, um, a money fix for that and they are, they're trying to work through that as, with us as well. Other than that, I don't have much, unless you guys have something.
Um, so Tyler and Susan, um, we have maintenance contracts to do prevent, some preventative maintenance on things like the pool and HVAC and, uh, the facilities, the state facilities folks have decided that we can't pay for that out of major maintenance money. So we, they don't want us to do preventative maintenance, but they'll let us spend a whole lot more when we haven't done preventative maintenance to repair things. It's absolutely ridiculous. But that's what we're dealing with, with that. So that's what he's talking about, those, those contracts. So anyone have questions for Adam?
Madam Chair.
Jason.
Brad? Don't forget we can, and I don't know how efficient it is, but we can go through the co-op too and and, uh, look at some of those things. Yeah, yep.
Yep, no, and thank you. Um, actually, we've, um, we've, we've met with the school's facilities department to sort of get some feedback from them. All of the information right now, um, does go through like the B O C's, the co-op, so that you're guaranteed low price kind of a deal. Right now that is in effect, although I do believe that is gonna be challenged as well at the state level. Um, but the, the biggest issue in front of us, guys, is what we used to be able to have furnished to us was through major maintenance money provided by the state. Um, two factors there. Number one, our square footage in this school district has never aligned to the square footage that you are funded through major maintenance. We were a pipeline school. So for example, the elementary school, the size of the elementary school, you as a district receive absolutely no major maintenance money for that school. So you rob Peter to pay Paul. And I'll go into this a little bit more in depth, but really what you have is, is you have your state major maintenance money, you have your general fund major maintenance money, and then we have our, what we call our, our ten percent money, which is, um, fields, pools, um, other venues that aren't true educational classroom settings. We're gonna take a hit in, in all three areas. And I'll try to explain that a little bit better, but, and, and, and I want the headline to read this. I am not proposing that we close the pool. What I'm trying to tell you is we need about a half million to six hundred thousand dollars to keep the pool running as a pool, the pool liner, and then the outside of the building. Um, both need to be done. Teresa and I talked over the break about maybe some grants. Um, I've reached out to some other um, companies to see if there's some financial help there. But the bottom line is, is the school's facilities department does not do pools. Um, they don't do football fields. Uh, that's your ten percent money. And so, um, we even asked the question about, well, you know, you, you put all that money into a football field, how about major maintenance for a mower to take care of it? Nope. Um, that's not, not in the rules and the regs. Um, so what we'll try to do is get you as much information um, as possible, but really with the loss of enrollment and the things that are in front of us, plows, trucks, all of those things, they're all very important. Um, but we're gonna have to find another way to fund those. And then with the loss of student A D M, um, twenty twenty-five is gonna have some challenges.
Adam?
So there's sixty thousand square foot that we do not get any funding for. Um, and that is exact same size within a thousand square foot of the elementary school. Like Brad said, we're stretching money that we are from middle school, high school, trying to cover that building as well. The ten percent money is ten percent of the major maintenance budget, which is nine hundred thousand, give or take. Um, so ninety thousand dollar Um, so ninety thousand dollars a year is all we can spend. On any maintenance at the pool and/or the football field. The grass on the football field fell under. Landscaping, so it wasn't part of the football field, it was landscaping. Um, that's why we were able to do that without 10% money. But if your bleachers fall apart, that's 10% money. If anything at the pool falls apart, that's 10% money. And that's all we can spend, major maintenance is ninety thousand dollars a year, which is nothing.
Anyone have questions?
Sean. So if. Kind of put us all together, so. We got ninety thousand dollars. And we got a lot more spend on buildings. So. And you're trying to, we're trying to figure out solutions. To. Uh, steal from Peter to pay Paul here. Pretty much what, what we're trying to do. So.
Correct.
How far are we gonna let ourselves? Get into debt? That we can't get out? What are we gonna, my, my option, my, my thoughts are, what are we gonna have to give up? To make this. Work. Because you gotta give up something. And I, I know it's harder to give than, and, and take away. But it's coming down to it with our numbers and everything. And, and, and the money situation. There's no way if the state ain't gonna help you, the federal government ain't gonna help you. We're gonna have to give up something. Or we're not gonna have buildings to educate kids. I mean, that's kind of how I see it.
Well, and everybody says, not everybody. One of the things out there is turn into a rec center. That sounds fine and dandy. The outside of the building costs you the same. It's still gotta be done either way. You still gotta fill that hole in, you still gotta put flooring in, that building has no air conditioning, so it's a whole new HVAC system. In the short term, it would probably cost you every bit as much, if not more, to turn that into a rec center. You wouldn't see any return. Except for your chemicals. Um, all the rest of the building is the same, so it's a wash. If you wanna save the building, that's what it's gonna cost. It don't matter what you do with it.
So what I'm trying to figure out here, guys, is. Grant, I don't wanna lose the pool either. I, I don't. But I also want buildings to educate kids. That's the number one thing, is, is how I see it. So if we gotta get rid of a pool. To keep our buildings. Up and going to educate kids, that's way more important. Than the pool and I, and, and I don't wanna lose the pool. I, I, it's, it's, it's been here for a long time, but we gotta figure out something. And it sounds like from what Brad's saying, twenty-five is gonna be a struggle. And, and also our numbers aren't looking real good, so we're gonna have to start figuring, I mean. We, we're all gonna have to get together and make this work because. Where's the money gonna come from? So that, that's, I'm, I'm just, I mean, Brad's trying, try all his resources, you're trying your resources. I mean, where, where's the money gonna come from? I don't know. I don't see where we're gonna get it.
So here, um. In theory, um. Your, your buildings for education, um, we will present to you a plan. In a sequence that we think keeps everything up and running, keeps the boilers running safely. And, and kids can go and staff can come to work in a, in a very good environment. With the activity piece, um, we're gonna have to really think outside of the box, but I do think there are some other. Maybe financial sources that, that hopefully we can, we can work with. And, and keep that in a separate kind of a bin, but here's what I would tell you, my number one goal. Is really, we've gotta come up with a way to get staff pay and benefits. And I don't wanna wait for our legislators to think that's the fix, cuz I don't hear that. In the forty proposed bills out there so far. None of them have more money coming for that. So, and I know this is the bad word, but I'll, I'll use it. I think the plan all along has been to look at a hiring kind of a freeze or really. Where anytime you have natural attrition to avoid a riff. You say, is this a position that we could absorb without losing a program? In other words, I'm not saying that you just say, nope, moving forward, if somebody leaves, it doesn't matter what it is, it's gone. And if it's your woodshop teacher, then woodshop's gone. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that as people, you know, look for different employment, uh, retire. I think we all need to understand that if we can absorb it, that's the time to absorb it, because if we're gonna take care of people who take care of kids. You're gonna have to do something with the pay scale. Cuz I don't think benefits are gonna get any cheaper either. So that'd be priority one. Then number two would be the whole major maintenance. Issue, how we're gonna handle the boilers, how we're gonna handle X, Y, and Z. And then the other piece of that is somewhere in there, we're gonna have to generate some general fund money. For the general fund major maintenance to do plows, trucks. Fire suppression and what was the other one? I'm sorry. Roof, the roofing, um, inspection. But, but we'll work with that. Um, yeah, if you have any ideas, we're, we're more than happy to, to listen to those. Um, but you know, guys, here's, here's the thing that many of us forget. We are still accustomed to a class sizes of seventy to a hundred students. Um, I'm gonna be really happy to see somewhere between forty and fifty kindergartners. And then I'm already told no. So. You know, what we have to do is we have to start understanding that, that we have to correct size. And some of that may be, can we downsize through natural attrition to avoid a riff? That's the thing we've gotta get out in front of.
Billy.
Since we're kind of talking about this, um, can you throw on your radar of start charging for activities? About every school we go to now charges.
True.
I mean, it's probably not much, but it will help some of the referees offset that stuff.
You know, ten thousand dollars is ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, every. A lot of the schools are doing it now, so.
Yeah, I think we could look at that. Um, I think there's just a lot of things we'll have to look at.
I also think it's. It's really important that. We provide some education. For the community at large. I think the community needs to understand that the legislature currently. Funds one half of one. CTE teacher for this district, for a district this size. That we provide all those classes that our community wants, our kids want, our parents want, business leaders want. But. They're not paying us for it. We're having to take it out of other things so that we have the programs that kids want and need. And. We're gonna need community members to step up and talk to legislators and say. We want this, it's our tax dollars, you work for us. You need to change some of those things. Cuz I guarantee you. Our two or three legislators, they're not putting up all their. Maintenance stuff until something blows up, so why does it make sense for them to waste? Tax dollars repairing things when we could keep them maintained all along? And spend less money. It's very frustrating, but.
Check Madam Chair this one more time.
Sean.
Okay, going back to the pool. Here I go. I'm gonna beat a dead horse here, so, um, so anyway. On that, tell me this, the Gillette schools, they don't own. They don't have their own pool and keep maintenance up on it, right? You got Thunder and you got Campbell. They have one swimming pool and isn't that owned by the city or the county? I don't know, can anybody tell me that?
I believe it's a, a community.
It's a community rec.
The city itself, I think.
Cause I thought they, they held.
Thing, she thinks there's one pool for, that the school district has and one that their community rec has.
So I'm just trying to, th- this is just an idea. The city. Or the county. If, if they, we, we could offer it to them. Maybe they, maybe, I know you got something, I don't know, maybe we could offer it to them. And they could help us out with funding too. Okay. It was just an idea. I don't get too many of those.
Do you think there's some recreation grants that might be as available as well? And then, you know, there are quite a few big, um, companies that provide natural resources to their. Um, you know, maybe Black Hills Energy. I was even thinking of one O because I just got that fire, um, today, but you know, maybe there's some other outside venues that would be. Able to help us to keep that pool as well. Because truly the, here's the bad thing about the pool is. Do you do the outside and let the liner go to heck? Um, do you do the inside and let the outside go to heck? Um, it's really one of those things that everything just aged out at, at, at the wrong time, not the perfect time. But it's just, it's just where it's at and, and I think to do it right, you really are looking at that six hundred thousand dollar mark. Um, to do, to do them both and do them well.
And we sponsor one activity that teaches you how to save your own life or another's life, and that is swimming. So there's that too. Jason.
I think, I think you're correct. I think we need to get, uh, educate the community on this and then. Get ahold of our representatives and have them come to a school board and. Kinda. Voice our concerns and have them answer some questions for us.
Yeah. Okay, Adam.
So in that stuff I emailed you guys, um. I don't know where my copy went, but, and there is a breakdown of. What they're saying the outside of the building cost. What the liner cost, um, that breakdown's in there and that's where that number's coming from. That was generated from. Those contractors themselves. That wasn't, we think it's two hundred thousand dollars that was generated from them.
The new store, this is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a Bootleggers liquor, the deli. The food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Well, that wasn't, we think it's two hundred thousand dollars that was generated from them. But that's all in your, in that email.
Yeah, the last email I have from you is September, so I don't know if it went through. Did you get yours?
Should've went out late this afternoon, I believe, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, I'll.
Now I'll make sure everyone can get a copy.
I'll look for it.
I'll have CeeLo do that.
Okay. Any more questions for Adam?
Madam Chair, I just have, I just have one question for him. Uh. So when the schools were built in two thousand one, the boilers were new with the school? Or were they part of the old school that the school was put on?
I assume that's, they come with the schools, but that.
No, they're all, they were all, all the system was, was new. We didn't take any of the, the boilers or the air conditioning systems from, from Gertrude Burns or the old high school or Osage or any of that nature.
Okay, Angie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of things. I do have a lease option to purchase agreement for a bus that I will have to have you sign a lot of pages.
Okay.
When this is over with. And I also received an invoice for the, um, National School Board Association. Membership dues for twenty-five, twenty-six. And I want, we want to.
We did vote on that.
So.
In the fall, I remember we did.
This is, um, this is a new one. This is for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Oops, would you like that on, on the agenda for board approval next time?
Do we have time for?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it on the twenty-ninth. Yes, the twenty-ninth.
And, um, just kinda, yeah, we got a lot to think about for twenty twenty-five. Um, all the messages I'm getting from other business managers and that are, don't. Don't spend anything you don't have in front of you. Because. We don't know if we're gonna get anything in ECA, so. So we're gonna start planning.
And ECA is external cost adjustment to the budget. And sometimes the legislature does that and sometimes they do not.
And just so all board members know. Educators like to do that in general, cuz we talk that way, so don't ever think. Or think it's embarrassing to say what, what in the world is, what is, what is SFD? Well, that's the schools facilities department to us, but we do that and, and we don't do it to be rude, it's just, you get in a habit and. And then you talk gibber.
Yeah, edu- education has more acronyms than.
We, we tend to hide behind a lot of those, yes.
And that's all I have. Anyone have questions for Angie? Thank you, Bryce.
Um, I don't have a whole lot, just at the high school, just get things up and rolling for semester two. Um, for the new board members, that means just getting kids' schedules, um, settled back in. Um, running credit, final credit checks on the seniors and just, you know, triple checking that they have what they need and if they don't, uh, getting it applied for them. Um, but most of all, I mean, I know we talk about a lot of hard things with money, but. It's just great to have kids back in the building again after, after a break and that's what it's all about, just to, I know some of them dragging a little bit slow at eight, ten after sleeping in till eleven, but. It is exciting to get there and as much as they like act like they don't wanna be there, I really do think, uh, it's a happy place for kids and it's, some of them, it's the best part of their day, week and month, so. I'm just excited to have the kids back.
Anyone have anything for Bryce? Sonya.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, I guess Tyler kinda hit on some stuff. Yeah, it's, tis the testing season, so we did a little bit before Christmas, we'll do some more after Christmas, so we'll have, um. Testing and data meetings for elementary coming up in the next few weeks, so by the end of the month. Um, you'll kind of have a summary of what, what that looks like. Uh, kind of generally asking kind of some questions of not only kind of are we hitting targets, but are we also seeing growth? So we kind of look at both of those things in terms of overall system. We had a staff development day on Monday, so, uh, teachers all started Monday and, um, that kind of wrapped up, I hit every single building. Just making sure all staff knew informational updates for where the standards are, what, uh, chapter ten has changed. What that means for our district assessment system, um, and just kind of work, work and expectations on roadmaps and assessments and rubrics. So that's, that's what they spent a good chunk of time asking questions, having good dialogue and then work time to work on those on Monday. Uh, and then I would just say kind of lastly, uh, we added, by the end of the week, we should have two new substitutes for the district, so. Um, we have that going too, so thankful that there's some, some new support coming on. That's all I, I have unless you have questions for me.
I don't see any, thank you, Sonya. Brandy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, they already kind of talked about it. This is our busy month of doing all our benchmark assessments and data meetings and, um. Just so you kind of get how, how big that is and how busy it is for us, it takes us about two or three days to get through all those data meetings. I mean, it's, it's a big process, so. Um, it's a busy month in January. We do have some other exciting things going on. We have a student teacher this semester. Kaylee Munoz is going to be student teaching with us with Kami Williard in, um. Kindergarten and then with Tori Mobley in fourth grade. It's been a weird split, but we're excited to have her. Also, our first grade crew is doing something kind of interesting. I was, I was excited to share. Nick Gray had reached out to some professors over at BH. And they coordinated with them for our first graders to go over for like a field trip and they'll have the education students do some classes to talk about. You know, some things that we're learning here and do some enrichment things, so I was pretty excited that they made that step and are, you know, building that relationship with a nearby university, so. Hopefully it goes well and can be something we can continue, but kudos to them. Uh, our boys intermural basketball started this week. Right now we only have ten boys signed out, but that's pretty normal at the start, then they talk to each other and by the end of the week, well. We'll have several, but looked like they were having fun today. Um, and then on the 21st, Suzie LaCroy will be doing a class for, or a workshop for pre-K parents. They're ready for kindergarten. And if you know of any parents who have a three to six year old that might be interested in that, please send them her way. Because our, sorry Brad, our rough estimates as of today, we have about 33 kiddos that we know are going to be eligible or have age to come to kindergarten that are attending preschool right now. Then that's usually our big number and then we'll get some out of the woodwork. So quite honestly, I'm going to be excited if we get to 40 next year. So, um, our kindergarten screening opens next month in February and so we'll give that a little bit of time and then hopefully we'll have a, a more clear idea. But right now, yeah. I'm not, I'm not guessing we're going to get near 50 next year, so. Um, so on that exciting note, that's all I have for you unless you have questions.
Any questions for Brandy? I would, I would just say, it, um, if they have a, a reporter presentation on their Black Hills State University thing to, to come do that, that would, sounds really interesting. Taryn?
Thank you. Um, I just have a few things. The team was busy. We hosted 23 IEPs in November, which is kind of a short month with Thanksgiving break. And then the short month of December, they were busy with 18 meetings. So teams were working hard, getting paperwork done before Christmas break. WDE is offering some professional development, um, some free professional development on specially designed instruction. So we shared that with the sped department. I think we even shared it with some Jena teachers. In the sped department, we're offering a stipend because it is some evenings. I think I have five people signed up for that. They also get some access to some online modules for that. That starts tomorrow, so I'm excited. It's, her name is Dr. Tessie Bailey. WD works with her quite often. I've seen her speak. I think, I think it'll be a good opportunity. So those people are excited. In the department, we got our indicator 13 submitted and our self-assessment. So we'll be getting reports back on those. I got to meet with Wasia, our region crew today to kind of get second semester going. And then we met as an exec committee and started planning our spring conference. There's just been a lot of changes at WD and, um, as a sped group, we're just looking for a lot of guidance on what the new leadership wants or is looking for. And we're just not getting that yet, so we're excited to meet with him. He's going to come to our next monthly meeting and, and hopefully share some insight in that. Um, and then I'll just add to the budget woes. I left, um, I had an email over the break talking about Special Olympics, something I've talked to you guys about before, that WDE said that my special education grant cannot pay for that anymore. It's, it's a community-based program. We did put that estimate together and shared it out to some sponsors without, without any luck. And then I was asked to bring that to the board. That's what it kind of looks like, um, for an annual cost, completely dependent on, on athletes. Mr. Austinson, our adaptive PE teacher, is still going to provide ski trips for those students who have adaptive PE services. That letter went out to parents. When I left today, there was only one response to that. So, um, they start next week, so I don't, Mr. Austinson might just have one kid going. So we have, uh, Taylor worked hard, got those dates with Terry Peak to really get that going. Terry Peak offered, those students could still participate in the area games, which is part of Special Olympics without being a part of Special Olympics. They said that they would let them participate. I've also been in touch with the Gillette office because that is our local region to try to get some help to how to bring that into the community here. It's been kind of hit and miss on responses or, or getting those resources. And so I'm, that's all I know about that. So that's kind of up for discussion in, in your budget as well.
Okay, so. Basically where we stand now is some of those kids will get ski trips, but they will not get to participate in Special Olympics Games, correct?
Uh, correct, like the registration fees. And so that's what the lady from Gillette was going to, said she was going to help me find. She said she had some sponsors or she would help parents find sponsors or funding. I haven't heard from her since last week, so that's where that kind of stands. Yeah, anything Special Olympics related, so like that area games and those state games in Jackson, that can't come out of the sped grant. But adaptive PE field trips, you know, to teach those skills is still allowable. Yeah, so that's the nice part. Um, I would tell you historically, kids have went skiing, um, about every week, sometimes starting in Jan, or in December, depending on snow. This year, we're not starting until next week. Jackson has not been something that's been an annual trip. It's really been based on numbers, funding, um, if parents want to go. And, and I would tell you that, that these expenses are also paying for some parent travel, um, to help support those students.
Brad?
Madam Chair, and starting last year, uh, when we knew this was coming, I did reach out with several requests to one of our local businesses. I still have not heard back on any of those requests, but this was one of the things on our wish list that we were hoping that they could maybe help us with. But as of one o'clock this afternoon, I still hadn't received any, any feedback from them at all.
Madam Chair.
Jason?
Is that something we can have put out in our, in the, our newsletters and stuff that the principals send out? Just, you know, letting parents know, hey, we have this program, but funding and things like that, is that something that we can do?
I don't see why, no. Bryce?
I'm just kind of wondering how, and what the exact goal would be. I know, I know your, the goal would be to fund it, but, I mean, that's very vague. I'd, I'd really need some more thoughts and ideas of how to solicit money directly from parents for it.
Well, not necessarily soliciting money, just, just informing the community that, hey, this program and, and we've been doing it this, you know, this long and funding wise. So I think, I think it's just something that the community needs to know whether or not they do know. And again, like I said, not necessarily soliciting money, just, just again, just an information that this is something that we may not be able to do anymore.
I would think it would probably be more appropriate for maybe the board to work with Taryn on some kind of informational thing instead of having our, our building leaders do that. If you would, would you think about that a little more and, and, uh, get with me later this week? And maybe we can figure out how to do that, Taryn?
When I did talk to the lady from Gillette last week, she was more than willing, if there was a community member who wanted to start the community program here to help those athletes, I mean, she's more than willing to help them from Gillette. But if there was a community member you knew of who wanted to start a community program, she is more than willing to help start that and facilitate that. She's supposed to be sending more, more information.
So that was, I guess maybe that would be the tag to take to say, um, to put something out that say, you know, we're looking for someone who might be interested in, in sponsoring Special Olympics in the community and that we do have some source, resources for information and assistance in doing that.
And other districts, because I've reached out to them, bigger districts typically have never financially paid for Special Olympics. They let kids have excused absences. Sometimes they provide transportation and equipment. Other districts have never done anything. Some districts are like us who have paid for everything historically. So it's been a big shift, you know, for different districts all around.
Do you have anything? Billy? No. Tyler?
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think you guys have covered a little bit. I just, I guess I'm blurring things too, but we've obviously had some really feel-good conversations tonight. And I think to Jason's point, I think it is going to be important that everybody has these conversations and then aware, is aware of the funding situation that we're going to be in. And Sean said it really well, what are we going to give up? That'll be an ongoing conversation, but I do think, you know, this is a public open meeting. It should be out there for everyone, but it is going to be our job to make sure that everyone really is aware of the situation that we're in and, and the hard decisions that are going to have to be made.
Absolutely.
All right. Do you have anything else, Taryn?
Is, is there a deadline on this money? I mean, for.
What do you mean?
I mean, what I'm saying is, do, do we got to have somebody to commit to this $12,000 like January 20th?
No, so, um, some of those pieces, we've tried to absorb this year, knowing that the funding wasn't there. Taylor and I, just in our daily have, I mean, Taylor did the, did the backend work of getting everything scheduled. Chad's done some equipment checks just on his daily schedule. The biggest cost would be if athletes wanted to go to Jackson. That usually happens in February.
Okay, one more question. How many, I might have two more, but one more that I know of. How many kids do we have that would go?
Okay, I sent the email out to five students. I think that's, Mr. Austinson and I went through the list and I, we sent it to five families.
Okay. Another question is, we could probably reach out to some other businesses in town. And then, I mean, this is, this goes pretty deep with me because I got, uh, a kid that went to the Special Olympics like five or six times and, and he still talks about it and he's 28 years old. So if we take the Special Olympics away from these kids, I mean, even though the medal probably means more in them competing with other kids, it means a lot to them.
Absolutely.
So I, whatever we have to do, we'll, we'll have to dig deep and make sure this happens from here on. That, that's how I see it.
Yeah. I, absolutely. Huge success stories have come out of Special Olympics. There's, and I, in the letters we wrote to the sponsors, um, I tried to make that very clear. I mean, they come back, we present them to you, they love coming here and showing off their medals, they wear them for weeks. They come back, we present them to you, they love coming here and showing off their medals, they wear them for weeks in the hallways. It, it is a big deal. It's above me, it's above us on, you know, where that funding came from and why they stopped allowing that funding to be used that way. That's, that's just the tricky part.
So I'd rather take from the pool funding gift especially.
I would also just throw out there that, uh, Mr. Austinson needs ski help. So if you're available on a Tuesday, Mr. Austinson needs ski volunteers.
Billy?
So the sheet you gave us is everything that you cannot fund, correct? So, um, just looking at it, I'm just throwing ideas out there. If we offered like the state games every other year, could we do something like that too? And then, I mean, that would cut our cost.
Right.
Six thousand dollars.
So historically that has happened. It hasn't been an every year occurrence.
Cause, cause I'm with Sean. I, I mean, you know, it's, it's been a couple of years, but last time they came, I mean, that was the joy, just listening to them talk and stuff. And if you give a kid at least one opportunity, and, and I guess I'm going to talk a little bit about this. To me, and I know we're talking about funding and everything like this, but we can fund every other sporting event for kids. These kids are our athletes too. I mean, I, I agree with Sean, I mean, in the terms of $12,000 is a lot right now, but I think there is people out there that would help fund this.
And I'm all for that. I mean, and that's, that's the conversation to have for the budget for Angie and money and.
Yeah, and I, I think we could go outside of the school to, to get some funding maybe on this. I mean, I, I'm not speaking out of turn, but I think Rec, Rec District could probably, is that something they could look in donating to, to? I mean, if they've got the money. I mean, not every year, but. I mean, just some, yeah, I, I'd like to see the ideas and, and get with you, like I said, and we'll, we'll, we'll brainstorm and, I mean, if I got to go to businesses, I'll help you out and I'll go to businesses and ask for some donations.
And I'm really curious to get those resources from the Gillette lady. I was hoping to have them for tonight because I'm, I mean, she runs a, a pretty good program in Gillette and she's kind of incorporated Sundance and Morecraft into that as well. But I haven't heard from her since last week.
And I was also going to add the that this is a once a year thing for these kids. They don't get a whole season of, of competition like all of our other sports do. So, um, I would really like to see this happen for them. And I'm wondering if we can't look at how much I, I meant to do this and I forgot. Do you know offhand how much is in the board's operating account?
Not off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay.
I can let you know though tomorrow.
Thank you, Billy.
But we are, so I got this, we are offering the Terry Peak this year for the kids, just not the state games, correct?
They start next Tuesday and they go for eight.
We're coming up with $6,000 somehow to pay for the Terry Peak, is that correct?
They're going on adaptive PE.
And that's how they're covering it now, okay.
And so that includes the date of the area games.
Okay.
They are not registered through Special Olympics at the area games, but Terry Peak graciously offered to let them come that day. Actually, it was their idea to have them come that day.
In order to get registered for the, the games, it would be roughly 400 bucks?
I don't know if their prices have changed. This was all off the last time we paid the bills.
Must have been a hundred dollars a student, so if there were five students qualified.
Yeah, and that's if, like I said, when I left the office today, I only had one response back for a student who wanted to participate, so that number could range.
Okay.
And what's their deadline for that?
Yeah.
I think the morning of area games. I, I, I don't think there really is a deadline to that.
Can you keep in touch with us on that? If you do have more people, I'd like to look at it, if we can.
Yep, and as soon as I hear from the Gillette lady, I'll, I can shoot those resources.
If there's two or three kids that want to do it, I think we can figure out way to get them registered.
Yep, yep.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Taryn. I appreciate you getting this to us because, like I said, it's kind of important to us. Mr. LaCroy?
Okay, well, I'm going to start way better than anyone else. I'm going to say Merry Christmas, even though we missed a little bit of that. The pages that I'm going to, um, present to you are just as of today, the 40 educational bills. There really isn't anything there besides information at this time. I think the one, probably the most important for us to watch, or actually there's probably two, the ongoing gun, uh, bill. I know on Monday we missed the meeting in Douglas, but apparently Representative Smith JD basically said that it is going to happen, there's no doubt about it. The only thing that local districts may be able to do is to formulate, um, the rules and regs that would, um, be like the requirement that we would allow, um, the firearm on school grounds. And then the other one to watch really closely, um, and we're all going to be sort of divided on this. We're going to be pretty happy as a taxpayer not to be paying more taxes, but remember less, less tick, less taxation is less money for schools. And so that could be a double whammy as we celebrate. As patrons, we, we cry as educators, so, um, there's several on there, I think there's 40. There will be weekly, actually daily. You should start receiving from the Wyoming School Boards Association. And Brian Farmer, they'll send out to you as board members their daily updates. And if there's one that catches your eye, or you want some more information, if you'd reach out, I'll try to do what I can do to get you that information. I could go on forever and ever, Madam Chair, but I think it's, it's that simple right now.
Yep, and Senate 537 is going to have a big impact on how many referees we end up getting and how long our sport seasons will be.
Well, I'm here to tell you, refereeing is tough today. It's, I think there's a lot of what-ifs with that thing, really. And I'm a gun owner, and I don't think that has a blessed thing to do with the topic at hand, what I do. But yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different conversations out there. And I do know that J.D. was here. He said, I do have his cell number if you would like it. And he has, he's reached out, you know, today he reached out on the literacy. He wanted input on some literacy information, so I forwarded that to the experts in literacy. And then the other one was, oh, about the groups allowing, apparently, certain school districts do not allow like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, military recruiters on school grounds during school time. That was sort of news to me. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. But then in visiting with some of our recruiters, they have reminded me that there are some school districts, they simply are not able to, you know, talk to students. So again, it's in front of you there. If there's something that comes up or you have some questions, reach out and I'll see what I can help you with.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? Let the legislative games begin. Jason, do you have a report for BOCs?
I do not.
Okay, and Dana said she didn't have anything either. We'll meet in February during this session, so I will be down there for a couple of days. Future agenda items. We will have an executive session on the 29th regarding an independent investigator's report to the board. I do think that would be pretty lengthy, so my suggestion would be if we would start at 6:00 with the executive session, and then at 7:00, if we weren't done, we could recess the executive session, do the regular meeting, and then finish that. If that's, can everybody come at 6:00? That would be a fairly long one. Okay. Let's see. And let's revisit what kind of funding we might be able to procure pretty quickly for Sped, or for Special Olympics for our Sped kids. And then we'll ask Billy to update us on the possibility of withdrawing all our part from the federal lunch program.
Okay, and Brad is correct. There's several schools that, like their high school and junior high, have got away with it. They'll stay at the elementary. And I think Sheridan County 1 or 2 has some schools that partake and some that don't. So, I mean, you can separate it, but I'll give a report. I think I got six or seven responses back.
I think there's a lot more flexibility there than what we knew six months ago. And I would anticipate probably even more flexibility when it comes to federal programming.
Is that something we want Denise maybe to come visit to and see if she'll come? So when we talk about it.
Great, I give. Okay, does anyone have anything else for future agenda items?
Madam Chair, I would just recommend that we revisit this Wellness Advisory Committee.
Right, we're gonna, yeah, we'll, we'll have you guys report on who all you have for the committee, and then we'll choose someone tonight in our next... Yes, I'm sure. Yep, gonna do that. That's our next item. Yeah, that's our next item.
Madam Chair, I was just going to comment from what the packet says, that it has to also be comprised of parents as well as students.
Right.
So we could do the board chair or board member election tonight, but we do need to get community involved in this as well.
Right. Yeah, you have the list of...
And generally speaking, that would usually be a student, but it doesn't have to.
And there might be someone else on Student Council who would be really interested in that. I've missed their meeting.
20, yeah, the 21st, I think she said.
Yeah, the 21st, their meeting, so we can ask them to...
Yeah, well, I'll get with Haley or have Percy get with Haley and see if they can nominate somebody.
Okay. Anything else for future agenda items? We'll move on to our trustee of committee appointments. Let's start with EWC BOCs. Dana currently does that. She said she'd be happy to do that again, unless there's someone else who's really interested in doing it. So... Do we have a nomination for a representative to EWC BOCs?
She's not here, so I'll nominate.
I'll second. I can't second. What? Oh, oh, I just get to a point. That's right. Dana Gordon, congratulations. You are the continuing EWC BOCs member. Jason?
Yes, I'll be glad to continue.
I'm happy to appoint Jason Jenkins for Northeast Wyoming BOCs Board. All right, now our committee appointments. You all can see the openings that we do have. So let's start with Tyler and Susan. Are there any of those openings that you would like to take? We have transportation, routes and salaries, transportation maintenance, new vehicles, buildings and grounds, curriculum, finance, professional salaries and benefits, non-curriculum, I almost skipped that, non-certified personnel tech team. There's no opening on tech team and professional benefits, but people will be happy to move if there's something you'd really like to be on. I'm thinking transportation ones might...
Madam Chair, I was going to suggest I will be gladly to take both transportation routes and salaries and maintenance on new vehicles.
Great. Susan? We have non-certified personnel, finance, curriculum, and buildings and grounds. I will tell you that several of these committees have, have had no outside, real separate meetings. We've, we have done several different ones over the years, but they don't meet super often. I do think as we move forward though with this year's budgeting, there may be a need, I foresee a need for us to have more committee meetings, so. Curriculum and finance. Thank you. And that leaves... He'll do non-certified. Billy says he'll do non-certified. And our tech teams filled so, what am I missing here? Oh, buildings and grounds. Joe, thank you. All right. Yep, we need one more for transportation. Let's see. Dana's already on a couple of those too. Will you take it, Suzy? Okay. So Suzy will be on the routes and salaries as well. All right. Good job. Thank you. And then Wellness Committee. Billy? Billy will do Wellness. And I'll tell you what, I will be your, if you can't be there, I will do backup for Billy on that one. All right. The 2025-26 school calendar drafts. So who wants to tell us what the rationale is for the two different ones?
So truly, I think the two different ones that you're looking at, I guess I should have labeled them A and B. So your first calendar is the one that they have. It's my first one. I like that one.
I see the main difference is starting August 26th or starting August 19th. So that seems to be the main difference to me.
I can jump in.
Yes, please.
Yep, there, there really are two different drafts essentially. One is a traditional calendar, very similar to what we have right now. So school five days, early out Fridays. Very similar to what we have right now. So school five days, early out Fridays, and teachers have PLC time in the afternoons. The other draft, the one that is starting earlier, is an alternative calendar. So while the coloring looks the same, the idea would be, that idea has been floated out from year after year, and we just thought, you know, we're not going to explore, we're not going to ask a whole lot of questions without getting guidance from the board. And so that's what, I guess, as a team, we're asking for is guidance of which direction would you like to go? Traditional, we can put that draft out to staff, get feedback on it, put it out to community, get feedback on it, and possibly have a calendar recommendation by the next board meeting to adopt and move forward with. The alternative calendar would, it's less student days, still requirement of meeting the minimum hours for every single building, a few less teacher contract time with, as you will notice, there's more gray days on Fridays, which means Fridays would be no students at all, period. There would be no teacher contact time with students would be, at least in this, the rough-eyed draft, rough draft idea. So it would be, some Fridays would be completely off for teachers, where others that they are blue would be the days where they work from 8:00 to noon on their PLC time, curriculum work, whatever. So with that, there would need to be two public meetings, a whole plan, rationale, how are you going to evaluate this? How does it help student learning? Those are all part of what the requirements are to apply for an alternative calendar. So it would take us a little bit longer to get that one ready to come to the board to adopt, to then make the date for, to send to the school board for approval in June.
Yeah, and so the State Board of Education approves all school calendars in Wyoming. And so that's why there are two different types. One's regular, one's alternative. Basically, everyone has to approve their meeting, the number of hours, even though the statute is written that it's a number of days. And the State Board decided if you were meeting the total number of necessary hours, that then they could allow alternative. So that's how that works. So it looks to me like starting a week early allows for a bigger move toward having more Fridays completely off for everyone. Sean?
Okay, I don't know. We've talked about this before and there's, with calendar one, that's where students are in the classroom more, right? Tradition, okay.
Yes, traditional, yep.
Okay, so, and I've heard good things about that. Now, if we go to this other one, this one where we started getting into some gray water here. So, I know Brad has brought this up too, moving forward. And I don't think we're quite there yet, but to start hiring staff, this is one of the things they look at, from what I understand, is they ask if we have a four-day school week. Okay, and then we go back and then there's the evil on that, where our kids aren't in school on that. So here we go. Are we gonna take care of the kids? Or are we gonna try to hire staff? We're kind of, I mean, I guess, I don't know, we're kind of in a dilemma here. For the future going on, we always have to take care of the kids, but we do know that there's other schools out there that do a four-day school week. We know this, and we do know it works. And we also know that give kids more time, they're going to get in trouble. We understand that too. But staff-wise, with the new generation coming up, this is what they want to do. They want to get paid more and work less. I see it every single day. So, and the staff up, we may be having to go to that eventually, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Maybe, I don't disagree with your wording, but I wouldn't put it on a t-shirt. I think, I think maybe the way to look at it would be in lieu of, if we do continue to find ourselves in a situation where money is tough and we're not able to, you know, to keep pace on the base of pay and our benefits and all of those things, this may be the other kind of opportunity that really you're not making the gains of others because of budget, but in return, you're not working as many days. Maybe that gives, give you some family freedom. Um, but in return, you're not working as many days. Maybe that gives give you some family freedom. Um, I've 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 heard that as well. Um, but but you're right. I mean, you you can argue this forever. I think what I need is if the board. First of all, what I need from the board is I need, I need the community to the north to realize that the reason we don't do a four-day week is because of Brad La Croix. If the community really wants the four-day week, then I think you should have the form, you should listen to them, you should take that input. Because really, there's a lot of questions. Um, what is the length of the day? Um, what are you going to do with that extra Friday? Are there some things that you can do to help with with um kid care? Um, that's not the right word. Childcare, sorry. Um, there, I mean, there's a lot of different moving pieces to that. And so the first thing I think you have to really think about is if if that board wants to take the two meetings, take the input and 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 from there decide m- maybe there isn't any interest and and maybe it's just not one guy trying to steer the ship. And and maybe there's another idea out there for different calendars. Um, th- there's all kinds of calendars out there. Um, usually, we try to be very careful about not starting school during bike rally week. Uh, it's just not a good combination of of buses, kids and and highway traffic. Um, when you end, um traditionally, we we try to get as close to the Memorial Day break as we can, so people have workers in the summer. Um, now, we're not at Jackson Hole where we're that dependent on on those workers, but a lot of young people, you know, do do that. Or again, your family time, your camps, you know, everything else that goes with that. Um, so I guess what I'm saying is 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 if you want to do that, I think the easier way to pitch that would be is to have some community meetings and and let those individuals um speak on behalf of their children um as the stakeholders of the community and and how the calendar looks. The other thing that I think you would want to look at, or at least that I have heard, is it would be nice to have a two-year calendar for those people that work in certain industries. You really almost need to know a year out so you can plan family time, because one year out just isn't, it doesn't work. And and we do know employment has changed, guys. It's um holy smokes, from ten years to five years to five months. Um, no matter where you're at, we're always going to be looking to do more with less. Um, and sometimes that's less money, sometimes that's less time. Um, I remember the fight way, way back when, when we said kindergarten was gonna go full-time. And holy smokes, that was evil. That was too long of a day for those kids. They'll never make it. They 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 did survive. They did, every one of them. Um, but on the same token, you know, does that mean to make up your eight-hour day on Friday? Is that a hour before where we start now and an hour after? I don't know. Um, but I think you have to look at that. Um, it's my understanding there is not a financial benefit um in making the switch. Um, although I do think there's probably some unforeseen things that probably could help. Um, are you gonna run buses? Are you gonna make lunches? Um, truly, when you look at our activity schedule, as you know, uh and again, over break, um, our gyms never really got a break. I mean, we didn't deep clean a gym, um because they're they're used. So there are just a lot of moving pieces with that. Um, and I think it would only be fair to hear from everybody and not be it driven by one person or the perception of it being driven by one person.
I also think it's important to realize that over average, there may be fewer teacher contact hours with one calendar, but that doesn't take into account the number of students who are gone on Fridays in our district. It's a lot. It gives us a lot of teacher contact time on Fridays, so. Um, and the other thing to remember too is last time we did a poll at parent-teacher conferences, was it seventy-eight percent? Was in the seventy percent of parents that said they would prefer forty weeks, so my preference would be to um take these to the community and do the forms and and let it be driven by stakeholders and staff and that would be my choice. Billy?
Only thing, um, I noticed on the second calendar, you got them starting on the twentieth of August. And Brad kind of touched us a little bit. On that first one, is there any chance of moving up the start date a little bit, so you're not coming back after Memorial Day? I mean, I know a lot of families, like you said, that's kind of a, and I don't know about teachers, if there's much. I mean.
Uh, I think traditionally, we kind of tend to keep it around when do practice days start? Um, and kind of rotate it around there. And um and the other comment that we've heard a lot from staff and families is they'd rather have time in August to do family vacations, camping, um wrap those things up rather than in May, but I mean, it's a catch twenty-two, honestly.
Well, it it also seemed like the uh one of these has a little extra-long Christmas vacation that it seems like that Friday before it could be put in August. And I just looked up August first through the tenth is the twenty twenty-five rally. So most of them, the ones who make bail then would be gone by the seventeenth. Or extend their vacation, I mean. Tyler?
Madam Chair, I would just uh reiterate what Sean's uh whole thing was. You know, we're here for the kids. I was looking at the student days compared to staff days. Um, you're still paying staff for being at the school. There's two days difference. They're one eighty-three to one eighty-five. However, you're missing twenty-two student days that the students would have interaction with a teacher and from my understanding, there are quite a few students in our district that do need the extra help. And they do seek that, uh whether it be in or after school programs or uh even just one-on-one time with a teacher. When the sports uh activities are gone, they get that extra time with this teachers. So again, it is a catch twenty-two. You're still gonna pay for staff regardless of an alternative calendar or a traditional calendar. I just feel that it's pulling away from the student needs uh to go to a alternative calendar, at least at this point.
Well, and I think that's one reason why we we actually do need to see the hours. We we need to mount on the hours too. And so if we increased a day by fifteen minutes or whatever, that that would change as well.
Actually, one of the calendars that I stole was from Glen Rock. They actually added student contact time. But I believe they're either on a six or a seven-period day. So they can use staff in different buildings that are on the same schedule. But then like on a block where you see them, you know, ninety minutes every other day, you see them sixty, sixty-five minutes every day. You do the math and and you actually would see the child more if I read the Glen Rock proposal correctly.
So moving forward on this. Um, how do you, how do you guys feel about a situation where we would present both of these in a forum? And if it was clear that fairly clear that a regular one was approved, then we would know that. If it was fairly clear that the alternative one seems to be much more popular, then we could do our public meetings for that calendar. I I I feel like we we need a public, we need a meeting, a public forum where people can see both of these. Tyler?
Think if that's what the board wants to do, do it and that'll help us a lot. I think I would only say it's important. Don't worry about like uh are we starting on August thirteenth through August twentieth and are we the day before Christmas? You just really need to decide if you guys want to go with an alternative calendar or not. And then we can hammer out the details over the course of those other meetings. Don't get bogged down in too many details. Just really get that general decision made.
And we do have some time. So would you guys like to sort of think about this and then we will give him more clear decision for the next meeting? Is that Sunday?
Yeah, so um like one of, like I'm panicking on the inside a little bit just because of time. Cause I'm already starting to schedule things for next year and I just, I don't have dates which to schedule with them. So like I'm earmarking things, but um, so if I wait two to three months down the line, those things might not be an option anymore. You know what I mean? Like if we're
So you're talking about scheduling professional development?
If I'm scheduling professional development or anything like that, many people are booked out a long time, you know, in in advance. So just keep that in mind while you're doing things like like, yes, there's time for deadlines for like when requirements are. Um, the the faster we can put together quality summaries and information to move forward with, um, the better.
Are we still, we last inning, we were exceeding the number of required professional development days. Are are we still doing that?
Uh, no, so there's ten in statute. If on a traditional calendar, ten professional development days, we have exactly ten black days on our calendar.
Okay.
So we meet that requirement exactly.
Okay. I guess I feel like we're not quite ready to decide. But how, what will make us ready? Joe, do you have?
Well, for your case, I I would say let's do the two meetings. Let's let's get them done. I mean, I've only been on the board for two years and we've done these surveys to parents and have never acted on them. And I think we need to either act now or or stop acting because they're gonna start, stop losing their flavor, you know? They're not gonna mean anything. So I say let's let's do the two meetings. Make a decision after that. You guys could proceed with doing all your planning and stuff. Do the two meetings. Make a decision after that. You guys could proceed with doing all your planning and stuff, um. And I know it's a detail, but it doesn't affect um your daily schedule between, cause I know middle school and high school has two different daily schedules. I mean, discuss stuff like that then. But I say let's move forward with the two meetings. Let's get it started so they can get their years planned out.
So we have three weeks between meetings this month. So do we want to do something like this on like Wednesday, the twenty-second?
Madam Chair, that would be fine. However, I I have to be in Laramie at that time.
Okay.
Not that you, I have to be there, but I don't, I don't want it to appear that I'm I'm dodging.
Are you gone that whole week?
Uh, yeah, I I think I leave um Tuesday evening and I'll come back on Friday night. Think it would be a good public relations move to miss that meeting?
No. That's a holiday. Um. How about Monday, the twenty-seventh? That would be before our next meeting. And I would assume that would be maybe a good day to have the auditorium.
Think that would be the best place to plan for a large group. That way, if you have it, you have the capacity instead of trying to have one here and then in the middle of it packing up and going over.
Okay.
We've done those. Those are not usually very positive. Just want to try like the twenty
The twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh at six or seven?
It's, I think, six. Oh, for kids to come?
I mean. Yeah, I mean.
So six thirty?
Depends on what they're doing that day. Some days, seven forty-five, some days, six fifteen.
I mean, you can do it at six, but you might which might be, you might get more people.
Well, they might come in then if we were there. Let's stick with six. And then we can help um help get that out on social media too. Certainly could.
So will we advertise this in the paper? Make sure there's good advertisement for this?
Yeah.
Okay.
We sure can.
I just asked if the twenty-ninth, since we have a board meeting, the twenty-ninth, if that would be the second meeting, because you gotta have the two public meetings. So I didn't know if the regular board meeting counted as that public meeting for it.
It's my interpretation, no. You'd have to have one other public meeting other than the board meeting. I guess that's an interpretation.
Since we were gonna start at six, maybe at five thirty, we could have the public meeting or the calendar and six o'clock, our executive session.
I'm not a really good time manager, but that I I'm worried that by ha- having a dead, stop dead time with that, that it might be perceived that we're not being good listeners. Cause you would have a, you'd have to have a pretty good stop. And sometimes I think the biggest pet peeve to a public meeting is when, you know, you say well, Susan will give you two minutes. And really what Susan has to say, it takes ten minutes. Well, then she gets hurried and then she really doesn't get to say what she wanted to say. And and I think it comes across as being very disrespectful. If you want to have if you're gonna take public comment, take the time to listen.
So then maybe we could.
Could you do the first week of February and then by that twelfth, we could have an answer for you?
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking. So we could do like Monday, February third as well at six P M. And then
Six or six thirty, sorry?
Six. Yes. Yep. Yep. Sound good? Yay. Okay. Does anyone have anything else to come before the board? If not, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. It's time for rec board. And Brad's gonna start us with.
Madam Chair, if you hit the gavel, I'll go from here. Um, so I would call the rec board meeting uh to order uh effective January eighth, twenty twenty-five. And at this time, I would accept nominations for the rec board chairman for the period chairperson, I'm sorry, from the period of January twenty twenty-five to November twenty twenty-five.
I would like to nominate Mr. Crabtree.
Have a nomination for trustee Crabtree. Are there any other nominations?
I like to nominate Bill. I mean, Joe. Joe, that's who I want.
Okay, and I also have a nomination for trustee Perel. Are there any others? None hearing any? Um, I would say all of those in favor of trustee Perel, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, that's five. And for trustee Crabtree. One, two, three. So congratulations, trustee Perel. Now you are now the chairperson Perel.
Thank you.
I'll nominate Sean.
Got Sean. Is there any other nominations? All those and we just point or do we gotta vote for these? All those in favor for Sean as vice chair, signify by saying aye. All those same sign. Alright, trustee Crabtree is vice chair. Um, need nomination for clerk. Yes.
I nominate Tyler Mills.
Any other nominations? All those in favor for trustee Mills, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those pose the same sign. Mr. Mills got it. Need nominations for treasurer.
Chair?
Yes.
I nominate Suzie.
Is there any other nominations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Alright. Moving on to visitors, comments, staff input, special programs. Seeing none, um, moving on to action items, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
And properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose the same sign. Consent agenda is passed. I see no old business right now, no new business. Is there anything for our information that anybody has? Seeing none, we'll move on to, oh, sorry.
Just for your information, and I'll get you this in the packet for next time, I do have a request um, for additional hours and pay um, for the pool supervisor. Um, and a lot of that um, has to do with um, we we've changed the amount of time that we test the water and and the frequency um, of testing the water. And so that will reflect that. And then the other thing, just for your information, I would let you know is um, one of the things that was brought to my attention with maybe some future planning is, is if we could maybe look at the Daniels Fund grant, which really, if you look at the Daniels Fund's purpose, um, which I've only did for a brief time today. So if you have some time, I would appreciate some input. Um, but it really does talk about, you know, lifelong kinds of opportunity, which if you think about the pool is a community venue from lap swim to swim aerobics, to competitive swim, to swim lessons. It really does cover that gamut, in my opinion. Um, but the other thing I think it it really does do is it does provide that life skill, survival skill, which which was really the 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 whole goal way back when uh, for a pool was to do just that, so that everybody least was exposed to the general um, you know, be able to dog paddle to save yourself if nothing else. Um, there's a lot of things that have come from that. Um, I did not um, receive a call back yet, but um, when I do so, um, that's one of those kinds of options that Teresa and I talked about over break of of maybe looking at alternative partners and and helping fund to to keep the pool a viable option for everybody. So um, I I name that, I probably shouldn't name it by name, but you have to name them by name or or you just talk in circles. But if you ever, if you just go to the Daniels Fund website, um, it really is a very, very well-done website and and I think could provide multiple opportunities for things that could help us. And and I'm sure there's others out there. I'm not limited to that conversation. Um, but that was just the one that was pointed out. So I I I worked on that just briefly today.
Thank you. Is there any discussion off of that? Anybody has? Okay. Um, we'll move on to discussion items. City rec or city request.
Yeah, so um, now I don't have all the answers to this. So let me tell you how it started, at least in my opinion. So I I received a call from the mayor and what they were looking for was a large kind of a parking lot for a car obstacle course. Um, and truly, when you think about big parking lots in summers where most of ours are empty, um, I I I told her that I I would look at that idea. Um, since then, it's become quite a, quite a venue. Um, and I think the the question at hand now has become um, if there were a beer garden, where would the beer garden be? If there were vendors that would be food vendors, you know, how would that work? How does it affect our 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 neighbors in the neighborhood? Um, and and it really has gotten a lot bigger. Um, I know, I know Pam said that she would be more than willing to come and and visit. I think the number one issue from what I gathered is is really the idea of having the alcohol on school grounds. From what I could could sift through the sand. Mr. Chair.
One second, Jason. Go ahead, Sean.
Okay. Um, I've been talking with them. So so they, they they really want to put me on their board. So I've been to one meeting, we got another one coming up. So I do know that the food venue that they want to put out here in the ministry and parking lot and then extended out the grass area if it gets bigger. Um, alcohol was brought up, not on school grounds. City, from what I understand, said that they could put it out here. Is this Washington Street? What is it?
Casper.
Casper, excuse me, Casper Street. Put it out here on Casper Street. Long as it doesn't get on school br- grounds and we would keep it barricaded. So alcohol wouldn't go on to um, school grounds at any time. So there is that wild guy that thinks he needs to take a beer on school grounds. The city, from what I understand, will help us with patrolling that issue. So it's kind of just the only thing I can really tell you right now.
You know more than I.
So I I do know that um, it's becoming a real big thing right now. Uh, we got about a hundred and fifty people from Utah, Florida wanna come here. It's it's not only to do the motocross in the parking lot, it's a drag race from Second Avenue down through to um, Dow Park. Um, classics. Um, it's um, from what I understand, the the city's on board. Um, we, they thought about doing it from the four-way down to subway. The problem is, that's pretty busy. So um, we're still trying to work a lot of things out. So we're gonna meet the fourteenth? I think the fourteenth, the fourteenth of this month. So and then I'll let Pam give you a little more detail. So.
Okay. Jason?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, it, I guess some of my concerns is, yeah, the alcohol. There there's no guarantee that they're gonna keep that from coming on the grounds. They say they're they're gonna have the city there, but I don't believe that or trust that, that they're gonna be able to police that. Um, the other question I have is somebody obstacles.
Jason, you cut out. Your mic cut out.
Parking lot, if I remember from several meetings ago.
Hey, Jason, can you start over for a second? I didn't catch and bear every other word.
Are you there now?
Yep.
Am I there now? So it's my understanding that our parking lot needs some work done to it. Um, from past discussions we've had. So I don't know what kind of obstacles they want to do. Again, my concern is with the alcohol and them actually truly being able to control that. Um, three, why are they not, have they looked at utilizing the fairgrounds?
I go ahead, Tyler.
Jason, it's gotta be paved. So far as I understand, it has to be paved.
And I've also had discussions with our previous mayor and she informed me that the utilization of our parking lot would be for roughly two days out of that week of events. Um, most of our, the parking lot here would be for uh, the old antique car show that they do with it. Uh, the obstacle course, they were looking at uh, other means uh, as to not tear up our parking lot. Um, from that. Uh, I know uh, Sean said the uh, drag strip has already been approved by the city. They're just trying to get the businesses that are between Second and Dow Park on board with it. Uh, they're having a meeting to discuss that and then there'll be letters sent out. Uh, but our uh, utilization of our property would be basic car show and food venue is what it would be.
Well, and I guess that's my question. If it's just basic car show, we have the car show at the Dow Park, so I mean, so I guess I don't understand.
Um, this is a national uh, show put on by uh, I think counts as part of it down in Arizona.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Um, this is a national uh, show put on by uh, I think counts as part of it down in Arizona that they do in uh, small, smaller rural areas uh, throughout the country throughout the summer. Um, it would be a week-long event. I know a lot of them would be going for, I think they've got uh, two or three different poker runs that might start here at the parking lot, but they would travel uh, Devil's Tower, the hills, that to give access uh, exposure to this area. Um, but that's all the information I have at this time.
Like I guess my thing would be, I just, I just want to see, cause like you said, this thing's changed so many times. I want to see exactly what the city's requesting then.
More information on.
Uh, yeah. Mr. Chair, I I think there's a lot of what ifs. I think it would be best we have the board come talk to us at the next meeting and tell us exactly what their plan is. Set it in stone. I mean, no more. What if, yeah. Yeah, I think that'd be the best avenue.
Um, yeah, and I would, I would like to invite him to the the board for this. Have him come. If you got more questions, please. Um.
Did you meet on the fourteenth?
Yeah. Yeah, we're meeting on the fourteenth. The guy that does all the drag racing is uh, uh, I think he's coming in from Utah. So he's coming in and and yeah, we don't have anything close. Maybe we can come in and visit with you and if anybody else, we can set up, anybody wants to meet, maybe if he wants to stay that afternoon, maybe we can just visit and kind of get some more ideas, because he can give us more detail. I mean, guys, we're right now, there is a lot of gray area, because we just got asked to do this from Sturgis. So and Sturgis asked us to do it. So um, one thing we really wanted to do is to help our town out, because they're talking anywhere from seven to eight thousand people showing up. So and that's what usually shows up for Sturgis when this goes on. So.
So, yeah, if we can have him come for the next meeting, um, please have some, if you have more questions for them, please. Um, Adam, if you have questions, I mean, absolutely. Yep. So that is one of my concerns too, is not just parking lot. Now for them, their safety to drive on it, but our parking lot afterwards as well.
And I don't care about their cars. I'm cared about what it's gonna cost afterwards.
Absolutely.
So so that uh, I'll let you guys know on the fourteenth what time to meet. And then if you guys got any questions, I'll let you know where it's gonna be. So, okay?
My other concern is insurance-wise, I mean, does, is there anything?
They, well, I did ask that question and apparently there is no um, the agreement that that we would sign or the board would sign basically releases you of any liability or wrongdoing with with the event.
Within the, so, but what about the public? I mean, we all seen these and how people get after a race. They all want to go race their car. If they wreck on our parking lot is is they're obviously not gonna cover it. Because it wasn't associated with their event. It was just somebody wild afterwards. But is there anything that's gonna keep us safe after hours, so we don't get sued because somebody got wild? Ran into a building. That's my other concern.
I have reached out to Shelby and I have not heard back from him yet. So I was waiting for after the holidays to get back with him.
Okay, perfect.
And I will get a hold of him tomorrow.
That'd be one of my other major concerns. Yeah.
My other concern, I guess, would be after beer garden, food venue.
I'm sorry. My other concern would be after the the food and the beer and car show and who's cleaning this up? I mean, is it gonna be the maintenance crew that?
Uh, no, it shouldn't be you guys.
Well, that's my other.
I, that's.
Or are they gonna have paid people come through? Cause these fences are gonna be full of garbage. You know how the wind blows and what it's gonna do.
Absolutely.
So can this group of make a money donation to the school district?
That was gonna be my next comment.
You know, my thought was, is we are, you know, that's a perfect time for a really bad hailstorm. If we could rent out spaces in the egg shop, in the bus barn for vintage cars, we may have just taken care of our money woes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jason.
And I guess the other thing too, Brad, along the insurance wise, as you said, we're covered, but is this organization gonna be responsible for any damages done to any of the school property? Who, is it the individual that's responsible for any damage or is this organization gonna be responsible?
One more thing. I do know it was brought up, but there will be, because there is a uh, from what I understand, there's an an organization that these guys bring with them that has their own security within. They're not police or nothing, but you know, kind of like a rock concert. You put on a security shirt and then you kind of go around and patrol. I I know that was brought up too. So.
That one's scary.
Can it, I mean, can this generate funds for our school in any way? I mean, rec board wise? I mean, see it as a donation, I'm sure they can't just pay our school to use our facilities, that's probably not allowed, but can their donations? Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to find some way to generate some money for.
Okay, so vendors fee, there is a vendor's fee. And we did talk about a vendor's fee. So, so many vendors show up, we charge them so much for setting up. So we can, we can, it's something to talk about, something to bring up. So if a vendor parks in the parking lot, charge them, let's say fifty bucks. Um, and, and it's just an idea. So much goes to the school, so much goes to the, to the, to, um, the organization, just like beer garden. So much of the, um, uh, entry fees goes to the parking lot or to the school, stuff like that. I mean, there's options, so, and, and that's questions you need to bring up at this meeting.
So if there's seven or eight thousand people, I know they're just talking about school parking lot, but are they also talking about this parking lot? By the football field? I mean, if you do a car show that big.
Be parking, I, I don't think it's gonna be used just for, except for just parking over there.
They think it will fit here.
Yeah, they think, so when that guy shows up the fourteenth, he's gonna look at this parking lot and he'll let us know if that's gonna be good enough first to use. So, right now, we're just right in the trial run, so if you do have any questions, uh, the fourteenth would be a good time to answer, I mean, ask, so.
All right, is there any other discussion on city's request for that? We will move on to the aquatic center. Who wants to start there?
Give the microphone, um, is the average cost of what it's costing us to run the pool a month and it's split between rec fund, um, and maintenance, the, the general fund maintenance budget. Um, it's about two hundred forty thousand a year just to run that place between wages. And that's not counting your janitorial, um, that's not counting any maintenance, that's wages, that's chemicals, that's, um, utilities is huge. So that can also go towards what it costs, what it's gonna cost for the returner to a rec center. It's gonna cost the same, virtually, you'll get rid of your chemicals, but you're gonna pay for that in AC bills. Um.
Yeah.
But that was also in that same packet of stuff I emailed you guys.
Do we charge for rental of the aquatic center for events?
Yeah, the only big thing we have is, um, I mean, small things are birthday parties.
Okay.
We don't charge for stingrays. We don't charge for swim meets for high school, there's really not a lot that goes on there.
Okay.
So.
I mean, uh, trusty Fitzwater's point though, I mean, in, in the future, if we.
Well, but one of the things, so the original agreement with the stingray group was, is, you know, that group does pay uh, a, a great deal for like the starting blocks, the competitive pieces of it, the lane ropes, that kind of stuff. So, you know, the, the agreement was, is, you know, a payment in kind is what they really do do. Because of the bulk of the competitive equipment i- is the clubs.
Hmm. You know, so, but besides just the aquatic center though, what do we charge for other usage of our facilities? I mean, if we're gonna start charging for ballgames, to come and watch a basketball game. I mean, and I, I've been a part of some of these other, that we get usage out of our school. And I mean, yeah, we've all heard it, it's taxpayer dollars, but are we at the point where we need to start charging? Niwa, Fall Guys, Stingrays, I mean, we're gonna have to start tightening some belts somewhere. I don't know what anybody else.
Yeah, because like, we don't make, I mean, passes and stuff like that, even at the weight room, that's, we don't make a lot of money on that, because refinery gives us money and the patrons use it. Hospital, all the school district employees get to use it, so when you're talking about a payment of community to use it, you know, swim lessons, we don't, I think we make three thousand a year on that. And that really basically pays wages, if, and it doesn't even pay wages.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, years ago, we, so senior citizens get to use it for free, um, part of the wellness program for the city. Um, they gave us a discount on the water, so in return, we allowed them to use it as part of their employee wellness. So they could use it for free, you know, to come and work out and use it for families. Um, there's just, I'm not saying there's not an opportunity to make money there. Um, my biggest concern for kids in the summers, if you charge too much, um, there's nowhere to go.
Yeah, in the summertime, we're open a lot and we have kids there, I mean, it's a babysitting service really for a lot of.
It's a nice clean babysitting.
Used it.
I just, the, the charging the Fall Guys and Stingrays and all that. One thing that worries me about that is that, that's our feeder program for coming up for junior high and high school. So, I mean, the, the fees, we, we just gotta make sure that, um, they're not astronomical.
I mean, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want to break a club that's feeding our programs.
And, well, and also when you think about numbers of students going down, we're down, we're, we're almost half this year with swimmers for a club. And you add all their sports and, I mean, we're all fighting for the same kids.
Absolutely.
Does, does EWC pay for anything for their activities, like in the gym and stuff?
No.
Okay. So really nobody. Yeah, volleyball, men's league, pickleball.
They might pay, like, it's negligent, but they don't pay the school, I think they use that to maybe pay instructors.
Yeah, I think it's to pay the instructors.
You're talking like men's basketball.
Well, yeah, because I know like when, when the Niwa came in, um, the rec board agreed to pay for redoing the floor every year if we let Niwa use it. Stingrays, obviously they do stuff. EWC, I don't know, you know, the, these other groups are doing little things. I mean, and some big things, but, yeah, I mean.
And I can't speak for Kim, but I really do worry about, I mean, as we look at budgets, I can't imagine the EWC budget's gonna grow either. In fact, I would, I wouldn't be a bit surprised to see that take.
Well, they, they probably just make enough to pay the instructor, they probably don't have any extra.
Right, they don't charge a lot, so it's, I think it's not a lot of money.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, and I think kind of where Joe was going is charging for the events, like swim meets and stuff like that, I mean.
Have you ever been to a swim meet?
Yeah.
Uh, high school is very not heavily attended, you wouldn't make any money, I doubt.
Well, I mean, but that's, that's what I'm saying, is, is your football, your soccer, basketball, volleyball, it goes just into one pot and how you divvy up is how you, you know.
And really what you hope to do is you try to at least break even with what your cost to your officials. I mean, that's a pretty good take at the gate, if you can just offset your officials' cost.
Officials too for swimming, correct? I mean, so, yeah, that just goes.
Uh, high school officials are paid, the clubs officials are not.
Mister Chair.
Go ahead, Jason.
I mean, I, I agree with you and Billy, I mean, we gotta tighten our belts and unfortunately, you know, everybody uses us. But we, and we pay, we put the bill for the electricity and the maintenance and all that stuff. And at some point, I mean, we're, we're gonna have to start asking these people to, to donate money to, you know, pay their fair share. And, and, and some of this cost now.
How, how will we move forward with something like that? Just discussionizing, discussion item for future agenda? Um, yeah, if we can put that on a future agenda discussion.
I, I would really like to see, I mean, anytime I go to an event, I'm paying other schools.
Hmm.
I mean, I, I mean, you could keep it minimal to start with. You know, maybe our students get in for free, but others, you know, I don't know how you go about doing that, I know we talked about it at one time, buying like a pass type thing too. I mean, I, I think that's an avenue we need to really explore, because if you can charge two and five bucks or whatever. An event, even junior high, I mean, I hate to say it, but I don't know about junior high, have you paid for junior high events?
I have not paid for a junior high event.
Think so, South Dakota's due, don't you, for wrestling? South Dakota, you pay for everything in South Dakota, but I don't think wrestling or.
Even if we started out with the high school.
You paid for a South Dakota, in South Dakota at a junior high event as well?
Wrestling, go to Sturgis for wrestling, you pay to get in there.
I think club sports you could, because, um, like we use it for a fundraiser, but I know when we fill out our financials to send to the big organization, there's a place for facility fee. We don't charge anything for that, because we don't charge a facility fee, but if you have that, you have to prove to like USA Swimming that it is really going, because they did find out people were putting that in there and padding their pockets, but. Yeah, but, so I think you could, especially with clubs. Because I mean, we have one big meet that has like a hundred and fifty kids. And I know Fall Guys Wrestling has a big tournament, and I know AAU volleyball has a pretty big tournament.
Yeah, and I'm not, for these clubs, I'm not saying ask them two thousand dollars.
No, yeah.
Two hundred dollars and being part of the basketball one, I mean, we try to charge our participants just enough to squeak us by. You know, so.
And like you said, we're offsetting janitor fees.
And we gotta do that, I mean, we, we put our janitors aside, they come in later to clean the gyms. Maybe, you know, clean the wrestling room, whatever they do, I think we need to try to offset that cost somehow.
I would, I would definitely look at starting a chart.
And I also think with the club ones, like we, I can speak with the swim team, we, we clean the pool really well when we're done with it. I don't know about AAU volleyball, I don't know about Fall Guys Wrestling. But if they're not cleaning, they should be charged a cleaning fee, in my opinion. And we, like, the swim team orders extra garbage cans, because it's a lot of garbage. And I know I've seen some, and I tell them now, like, the other facility, you have to order garbage cans. Because that's like two hundred and fifty dollars for two garbage cans. And, you know, we're, we're taking the hit and filling up our dumpsters as a, as a group. I mean, that's just little stuff.
I would definitely like to see us looking at charging for high school activities, yep, going forward.
Well, and li- and like Billy said, I mean, you know, with Cora Lynn basketball, Gillette, it's like five bucks every time you go into the gym, and when they're going there two or three times a week, I mean, so, yeah, it, it could, we're not gonna make millions, but, I mean, it'd help offset some of the cost of, like you were saying, the cleaning and all of that stuff.
They'll charge for all of them, because I go watch my grandkids in high school and, yeah.
Not every school is, but a lot of them.
Yeah, which you said Gillette does and like. Like, yeah, well.
They did for like the AU volleyball and stuff.
Yeah, for the club stuff.
For the club stuff, you, you had to pay to get in.
Yes, for the club stuff, yes.
I thought there was like a wrestling tournament, maybe you can tell us, CeeLo, that we always had to pay a team entry fee to a tournament in high school. But I always had to give them a affidavit or, I, I think, I think that's, I, I, yeah. I remember Riverton.
The Ron Pond, I think, was the one that I remembered that you had to take like a.
It's like two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars, and there's, there, I mean, there's a few tournaments, I, I don't know if they're. Hmm.
Well, I think we charge with our high school start of the year volleyball, don't we? Thought we did.
There's something we should look into as a team fee for tournaments and stuff like that.
We get some stuff together, I'll call you. Um, has anybody else got any discussion on that? Is there anything else anybody wants to bring up, getting into your first meeting? Get it out of the way.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Jason.
And I don't, I don't want to be that guy, but I want to, something that Billy brought up about the rec board using some of that money for, for the skiing, um, we just gotta be careful, because I know in the past, you know, it had to be for the community. I know some things have been brought forth to us to pay for, and we've denied them because it was more of a a few individual versus a community thing, but I mean, if, if there's any way that we can work that out, I don't see why the. The rec board can help out. But I just want to make sure, you know, that we're just fair and consistent with, with who we, who we allow to, or where we spend that money, so.
Yep, abs- absolutely, Jason. Alrighty, nothing else, meeting adjourned.